I can't help you with that chair.
I got it.
Okay, I'm gonna read them together to you, okay? All right. Will you just state your name after I say I? Hi. Susan Argers here. You saw me swear at the end of the day, basically execute the duty. As the office as a member of the county, I'm a resident of the city of Dennis, Texas. And to the rest of my ability, there's no exception within the constitution and laws in the United States. And it's up to state so to pass. I'm going to use our attorney, Claire, that I have to get a full more statement and press. You're the attorney. Tell me, did it say anything?
Are you ready? All right. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the January eleventh, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the City of Dennison. First meeting of twenty twenty-two. And thanks for bearing with us as we took care of some housekeeping duties of getting members re sworn in and new members sworn in and so forth. Like to recommend everyone that this commission is a recommending body. And the items on these agendas, on the agenda will be sent to council meeting on...
January eighteenth.
January eighteenth, okay. And for those of you that have filled out a speaker card today, thank you. When you do, when we get to that point in today's meeting, when you do approach the podium down there, if you would state your name and address, please, for the record. And with that out of the way, to confirm that we do have a quorum present?
Yes, we do.
All right. And with that being said, we will move to the consent agenda. Are there any questions, comments as to the consent agenda?
I move to approve the item on the consent agenda. I'm sorry.
Elects.
Oh.
I guess we need to elect a vice chair and a chair for the commission. I'm sorry. Forgive me.
Nomination. Okay, back up. All right, I guess first we're going to, we need to take nominations for chair and vice chair for the commission.
I would like to nominate Brett Evans to be the chairman of this commission.
I second that.
Oh. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I spoke quickly.
All right. Now we need to elect a vice chair for the commission. Do I have any...
I'd like to nominate Spencer Redwine.
I'll second that. Thank you. All right, so we have Spencer Redwine nominated as vice chair. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thanks.
We're set now. Our officer positions. Okay. Now we'll move to the consent agenda. Any questions, comments for any, for the item on the consent agenda? All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the item on the consent agenda, item A.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. None. Motion is approved. All right. Now we'll move into the items for individual consideration. Item four A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item four A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a site plan for a proposed new auto dealership for Classic Chevrolet Cadillac of Dennison located at four fifteen U.S. Highway seventy-five. Case number twenty twenty-one dash one seventy-nine S.P. So if y'all recall, this piece of property was recently zoned planned development to accommodate the use of aluminum clad panel for their building. And now they are ready to get that site plan approved to move forward with their development. Here's the site plan for phase one. The, they have one main building in the center that's about seventy-five thousand square feet. They need all the parking requirements per the code, same with landscaping requirements. Here are some of their elevations with that aluminum panel, clad panel siding along with some concrete facade. Let's see. Just to recap, they're requesting approval of the proposed site plan. Site plan includes one main building, seventy-five thousand square feet, and a final flat for the subject property was a companion item on this agenda. I'm present for any questions, and so are the applicants.
Is there anything else the city's still working on or in regards to the site plan?
No.
Any questions of staff?
I just have one quick question. It's been brought to my consideration that when we, in this case, it probably doesn't matter too much because the piece of land on the corner on seventy-five isn't very large. But when we allow a development rather than, and put in a detention, whatever they call it.
Detention.
Detention pond.
That we're taking away land that could be used for possibly a better use. And just for the record, I think that probably in this application, it probably, there's not enough land there to do a lot with, and it probably isn't a problem. But when we look at the part that's south of there along seventy-five, I think we need to be more mindful of approving something like that. And I don't want to set a precedent that we can't change, so that's why I want to put it on the record. It's, it's something to consider. Because we could have a situation where we have landlocked land behind when we come to the area that is south of this, just south of Crawford.
That's okay. Okay, thank you.
And it may, may depend on just the layout of the site and/or the topography of the site as well. Any other questions, staff? All right. Looks like I have at least... Two here. The applicant would like to come forward and speak?
Good morning. I'm Chuck Freeman with Cali Ann Freeman Architects. Eleven fifty East Kennedale Parkway, Kennedale, Texas. We are the architect of record and here to answer any questions that you might have. We have several people with us today. We have the representative, Bill Jones. We have Mitch Honzick, Ron Hamm with the general contractor. Feel questions that you might have. Questions?
Just one question about the timing of the two phases of the development. Can you talk to that?
We can. Phase one obviously is denoted on the site plan with the bigger building. There are future, two future buildings planned. When will that happen? We do not know, but we have addressed it from a drainage and building layout standpoint. So we just don't know when it's going to happen, but we do know it will happen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't have any questions. Do you, I guess, can you speak to, I guess, her comment earlier as far as about the detention pond being there on the, on the corner of Crawford and seventy-five?
Well, the site slopes from north to south, so it flows toward the detention pond. Detention is required, so hence the location of the detention. It just has to be there. Cannot be uphill, so to speak. So the positioning is... It addresses the topography of the site and the drainage runoff.
Any other questions for Mr. Freeman?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Would anybody else like to come and speak on behalf of this request?
My name is Mitch Honzick with Speed Fabre, thirty-nine oh four West Sixth Street, Fort Texas. And just like Chuck just said, we are here to support the project, the project here and answer any questions you might have. So from a constructability standpoint, any questions, I'm here to answer.
Any questions?
All right, then I'll excuse myself, and again, we support this project.
We're going to have cars and chips by the time that that, that this project is done.
We hope so.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right. Is there anyone else to speak on this request? All right. If not, any other questions or comments among commission members? All right. If not, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the site plan for the new auto dealership for Classic Chevrolet Cadillac of Dennison at four fifteen U.S. Highway seventy-five.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None? Motion is approved. Congratulations. Thank you all for coming. All right. Now we're going to move into the public hearings portion of this meeting. Like I said again, if you come to speak, please state your name and address for the record for us. We will start with item number five A.
Item five A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request for approval of a conditional use permit for an auto repair major facility located at nine seventeen South Armstrong Avenue. Case number twenty twenty-one, one twenty-three, CUP. If you recall, this item came before the commission on December seventh, and it was tabled to allow the applicant some more time to come up with a site plan that provided adequate parking as well as screening from adjacent residential property and for their open storage. Just to remind, just to kind of remind you all, the property is located at the corner of West Hole, South Armstrong. It is zoned commercial. The applicant is proposing business hours of Monday through Friday, nine a.m. to five p.m. This is their site plan that they provided. It's a little hard to read, but they have added seven additional parking spaces, two up towards the front of their main building, and then five along Armstrong on the east side of the property. And they've also proposed a wooden privacy fence located along Hole Street to screen the adjacent residential properties as well as to screen their open storage from the main streets. And just to reiterate that they are requesting a conditional use permit in order to operate this auto repair facility. And I believe the applicant is here to speak if you have any questions, and I am also present for any questions that you may have.
So you said there's going to be wooden fence, wooden fence along Hole?
Forty, forty feet wide.
Yeah, and since they sit on a corner lot, that fence will have to sit back twenty-five feet.
Right.
So it's forty.
Okay.
Do you see that? I know it's kind of hard to see.
Right. It's basically within the property.
That's correct.
It's where the...
Hello.
Less wrinkles.
So it does, it is, I'm a little confused about the fence. So it just makes that right angle turn there, or is that the only place where it is? Or does it go along the...
Just on Hole, I think is what she's asking. Just on Hole and not on Armstrong or on...
No, so it's a, it's a long hole, that forty foot is a long hole, and then thirty foot to connect it to prevent...
The interior.
Correct, to screen from the Armstrong.
Okay.
That's for all the, you said the storage parking?
Yes, for open storage, for the cars that they have on the lot.
So then is the, the rest of the parking lot would just be for actual...
Cars that are for sale or...
Customer parking.
Yeah, customer parking.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Would the applicant like to speak on this request? Any other question, any questions from the... Any questions of the commission, of the, of the applicant?
Not really.
Is anyone else here to speak in favor of this request or in opposition of this request? Looks like we did have one... One comment that was an email that came in that was in favor, in favor of the application, noting that they have stepped up in tackling most or all of the concerns about adding additional parking, removing the carport, paving the parking area, and adding screening. That's from Dallas Hayden.
I remember that we had a complaint before because of the noise at that location, and I don't know if that's been addressed in any way, but that's not our job, so...
Right, right.
It's not...
I would assume that's been remedied as well, but you're right, the lady that lives across the street.
And I think it's maybe because of the hours too, so...
It was like eleven-thirty in the evening, but they're, they probably remedied that.
Any other comments or questions of the commission members? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the conditional use permit for the auto repair at nine seventeen South Armstrong Avenue.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is approved. Move on to item five B.
Item five B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request to amend a planned development zoning district to allow for the development of duplexes at seven fifteen West Sears, case number twenty twenty-one dash one fifty-six, P.D. This item was also brought to, brought before the board or the commission on December seventh, and was tabled to allow the applicant some time to kind of come back with a few recommendations. Properties located on Morton and between Morton and West Sears. It's currently zoned planned development for manufacturing, industrial manufacturing, and they are looking to amend it to build duplexes. This is the concept plan that the applicant has brought back, including a slip road to provide parking in the front of the duplexes that front on Morton Street. They have provided twenty additional parking spaces. I think the goal was to prevent parking from, on Morton Street. So this is how they have remedied that. They have also provided elevations that are with a more variety than what they had provided this last go-around. As you can tell, they're, they're, they're different, they're quite different. And just a reminder that this was brought before y'all on December seventh. The entire site is approximately three acres, and the applicant has provided new elevations and added a slip road to provide that additional parking. I'm present for any questions you have, and so is the applicant.
Were there any additional concerns that you haven't addressed yet, then?
No.
And second question, do we need to take it off the table then? Remove it from the table, since it was tabled?
That's a good question.
I move to remove it from the table.
Take it off the table. We have...
Thank you.
We have a, we have a motion to remove this from the table? Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, a second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. This item is back on the table. Now we'll continue. Any other questions of staff?
I, I think it's a general question in terms of, because I think this is undecided whether it's ownership or rental property. And so with the, if the developer is in charge of the, who is in charge of the maintenance of the grounds in a situation like this? I think this is going to be an ongoing thing with duplexes, and we have problems sometimes with maintenance, and I'm just looking to know who's responsible for that.
These are individually plotted lots, but when it comes to the maintenance of the, are you talking about the landscaping? That will be written into the P.D. for the developer to maintain that.
So it'd be like a homeowner's responsibility?
I'm sure there's, I'm assuming there would be some type of HOA to address that, but if there's... Maybe the developer can...
It'd be good if they had a homeowners association. Just a thought. I, I, the comment I would have is that they have done everything that we asked them to. We had three issues, one being the, the spacing the front, not allowing for any parking. Having the staggered sites, and they've got them looking nice and neat. And then, of course, the different elevations, and they've done all that, plus adding the landscaping, and that's a good thing. They've done their homework.
Any other questions or comments of staff? All right. Is the applicant here? If you would, go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please.
Ronnie Malone, sixteen eighty-one Enterprise Road, Sherman, Texas.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Malone, for addressing some of those issues, and I think that's going to end up working out and making it better for those, especially for those ones fronting Morton Street to have that type of parking in the front. I guess as far as on that question we were alluding to earlier, will there be an HOA to, as far as for, that will be in charge of the common area maintenance? Is that how you're...
We can definitely set up HOA. We did on the last one. That's real simple.
Right, I just didn't know how you would address as far as obviously maintaining the, the, you know, the landscaping and stuff that's part of, in the parking lot and so forth that are part of those...
Yeah, we can do that. We'll do HOA.
You know, versus, I guess, being the responsibility of each individual property owner for maintaining their little portion of the...
Right.
That part, you know, especially that part fronting Morton Street.
That'd be the main part right out there that nobody wants to take care of.
And so forth.
Are you planning to put in any kind of watering system for the landscaping you're doing?
Yes, smelter system.
And that would be my recommendation to have, you know, some sort of, that, you know, to take care of that part of it because of where it is that... Obviously, just to make sure that that's being, you know, being continuously maintained, especially the part there fronting Morton, Morton Street. Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this request? If not, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion. Any further comments or discussion among the commission members? If not, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the amended request for planned developments at seven fifteen West Sears Street.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. None? Motion is approved. We will move on to item five C. Thank you, guys.
Item five C, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request to rezone approximately one point five nine six acres located east of Fannin Avenue and north of West Coffin Street from light industrial and commercial zoning district to SF single-family, or SF five, single-family residential zoning district, case number twenty twenty-one dash twenty, or dash one seventy-eight, sorry. This is an aerial of the property located on South Fannin with West Ford Street to the west, and then to the south is Coffin Street. And it's currently zoned commercial with light industrial surrounded by a single-family five residential zoning districts. The developer is requesting to rezone this property in order to move forward with construction of single-family residences. The overall zoning of the surrounding area is single-family five with just that one little spec for industrial purposes. And the proposed zoning district change complies with the comprehensive plan. Present for any questions, and so is the applicant.
Does it, does that actually front on Fannin?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I didn't see why that it was, it had the, the flag.
Yeah, the majority of the portion fronts right there on South Fannin.
All right.
What's, what is north of that? I'm sure that there's other houses, some, but there's nothing showing on the map. There were one, four, nine, four, two, five.
Are you talking about the, the property just to the north of it?
Yes.
It's, right now, it, it looks just like that, I believe.
I'm sorry?
It looks, it's just woods just to the north of it.
Okay.
But it's zoned for residential purposes.
Right.
Any other questions of staff at this point? Is the applicant here? Yes. Mr. Holly, want to add anything?
Not really.
Give me, state your name and rec, state your name and address for us, please.
Josh Holly, thirty-three forty-eight West Stafford Drive, Dennison. Pretty much, I just think those other buildings are mostly fronting Coffin, which is a pretty busy street. There's hardly any traffic on Fannin to warrant zoning of commercial, so that's it.
So what's, what that flag portion, is that, what's that going to be used for? Is that just part of the property?
I'd probably just, that's just how I purchased the property. It came with that, and so, you know, I... It's difficult to know what to do with it.
Probably not much.
So I'll just probably sell it with the northern lot, but, but it'll tie on to, you know, residential is north of there, so...
How many?
Six.
Six lots?
Six lots.
Yes.
So six lots, and then all just fronting Fannin?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Holly? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here to speak on this request? Not, I'll close the public hearing portion of this item. Any other discussion among the commission members? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to rezone approximately the 1.596 acres located at Fannin Avenue, east Fannin, east of Fannin Avenue, north of Coffin, for the, from the light industrial zoning to the single-family residential zoning district.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None? Motion is approved. Thank you all for coming. We'll move on to item 5D.
Item 5D, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request to rezone approximately .1377 acres, located at 331 East Chestnut, from light industrial zoning district to SF5 single-family residential, residential zoning district, case number 2021-176Z. This property is located at the corner of East Chestnut and South Travis. As you can see, there is residential to the east, to the north, and to the south of this property. It's currently zoned light industrial. This property would just be an extension of the single-family five zoning district that's just to the east. Currently, the property owner is going through building inspections to build a single-family home, so this is just going to allow them to further that. And I'm present for any questions, and so is the applicant.
Any questions of staff?
I'm just trying to interpret the map, and I'm still new at things like this.
Sure.
The, can you explain what the, what I'm looking at with that shape in the middle? Is that where the potential houses would go?
Are you talking about the one that's outlined in yellow, this one right here?
No, she's looking at the, at the survey.
On the survey?
In the agenda?
Yes, or is that an easement, or what is that?
No, I think that's, that's their, it says form boards, that's where they're...
The applicant is also amending this, they're going through, with an amending plat to bring both of those lots together in order to build on one plat.
I gotcha. Thank you.
This is basically one of those that's in that area of, that's been residential, but it's zoned otherwise.
Right.
Bringing it into line with the actual use. Any other questions of staff? The applicant like to address anything? Anyone have any questions for the applicant?
I don't.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this request? If not, I'll go ahead and clo, close the public hearing portion of this item, and any further discussion among commission members? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the request to rezone approximately .1377 acres located at 331 East Chestnut Street, from light industrial to single-family zoning district.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Motion is approved. We'll move on to item 5E.
Item 5E, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request to rezone approximately 21.55 acres, located north of Ridge Drive, from single-family 7.5 residential zoning district to a planned development zoning district, case number 2021-178PD. So this is the property that is located north of Ridge, just to the southeast off of Loy Lake, you have the Hyde Park Apartments, and just directly south, you have the Pioneer Estates, which is that extension of South Willis, those houses that were developed a couple of years ago. It's currently zoned, single-family, 7.5. The applicant is requesting a planned development to accommodate some smaller lots within this development. Their PD is split up into two areas, with Area 1 consisting of 34 lots and Area 2 consisting of 40 lots. Area 1 would consist of the smaller 50-foot lots, while Area 2 would be consistent with the single-family 7.5 zoning district standards with 60-foot lots. Their base zoning for this PD is single-family 7.5, with the, basically one of the only deterrents in the smaller lot size. They will have two-car garages across the board for these lots, as well as, I believe the minimum square footage is 1,600 square feet per dwelling unit. They will also have, sorry, I forgot to mention, they will have two points of access coming off of Ridge, and they plan on connecting to what is Lindley Lane up there to the north. And I am present for any questions that you may have, and I believe the applicant is as well.
Is any of this property in the floodplain?
Um, I don't believe so. But that might be better for him to answer that.
The applicant like to...
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, love this time for a P&amp;Z meeting, save some evening time. My name is Jeff Cranell, CCM Engineering, 2570 Justin Road, Highland Village, Texas. My first opportunity to work with the city of Denison. Lived here my entire life, so it's nice to venture this far north and meet some new friends. What we've done in this particular development, there is no FEMA floodplain adjacent to us. However, we are preserving that entire creek bank. It is a conveyance way. There is a lot of water. It flows down through there. We're gonna use that asset, and that's really one of the key ingredients of our zoning change, is that we wanted to preserve some of the open space there. We have a nice little tank that's beautiful on the south end of the property, and we kind of share it with the neighbors, which creates a few little headaches. So staff in their wisdom guided us toward looking at maybe preserving that pond as well as the open space. What we've done on our PD is to look at what I call transition zoning, where we are adjacent to multifamily to our east, we're adjacent to commercial on our south. The west, we have a really good buffer before we get over to the interstate, but we have preserved in the Pure R75, SF7.5 on the north end, when we're adjacent to SF7.5 current zoning, so try to be very sensitive. I look at these projects like I live there, and I like to make friends as best I can. Sometimes that works, sometimes it doesn't, but certainly we put a lot of thought into this, and what the smaller lots do, it adds about five lots to the project, which helps us preserve some of these open amenities, open space amenities. So it's a little bit of a trade-off for us so that it makes sense, and we like to plan, and really, if you have any questions, be happy to answer those.
I've got one about the water in the area. I'm assuming that the west side is the creek bed?
Yes.
And, and is that a lake that's to the south?
Yes, a pond.
So you speak to how you're gonna use that combination?
It's a, it's a nice, looks like a natural pond to me, and so we, we'll use it a little bit for detention, for our detention analysis, but mainly to preserve that and, and use it as an asset and amenity for our neighborhood. And well, I'm not sure what the commercial property to the south is going to do with it, but certainly, it's, it's gorgeous. A lot of pretty trees, water's very nice, so it looks like it'll be an amenity versus a headache.
It looks like you've kind of got some green space dedicated to the area around it.
This is a little bit of an infill piece, so we've struggled a little bit with getting the small scale of this and trying to create, but we do have, as you can see on the west side, we did parallel the street along the open space, which gives everybody not only a visual access, but, but direct access to that greenbelt rather than hiding it behind a rule of lots. So been doing this a long time and kind of know some of the little tricks and trades that really make a nice neighborhood.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Thank you all.
Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? Then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any discussion among commission or questions of staff? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I recommend approving the request to rezone approximately 21.55 acres located north of Ridge Drive from single-family to planned development zoning district.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Thank you very much. Any further business today?
Staff updates?
I don't think there are any staff updates. I guess, I think John and maybe Bill went back and told you what was passed through council. The infill overlay was repealed. I'm sure you were all aware of that. And other than that, I can't think of anything that is pertinent at this moment.
All right. All right, well, that being said, would I have a motion to close the meeting?
I move adjourned.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
Congratulations, Mr. Cheff.